Testing, testing, microphone, microphone. Testing, testing, microphone, microphone, testing, testing, microphone, microphone. Testing, testing, microphone, microphone. Testing, testing, microphone, microphone, testing. Look at the camera. Look at the camera. Testing, testing, testing. Keesling one, keesling one. Look at the camera, look at the camera. Look at the camera, look at the camera, hello. Hello, hello, face here, hello, 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 hello. Hello, hello, hello. Hello, hello, hello. Hello, 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 hello. Hello, hello, hello. Hello, 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 hello. Isn't right. Hello, hello. Hello? 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 Eight. Yeah, it'll be going better tomorrow afternoon about one o'clock. That sounds like we may have a chance of like some showers, but it looks like it'd be more of those pop-up kind that does rain, it won't last very long. I haven't checked since this morning, yesterday morning or this morning they were just showing like, yeah, you could be in an area where it's gonna shower and you may not be. Hope we're not. Brittany has to come in from Ames.
No, she's from Quad City.
Or Quad City. What's her specialty? Good, she can fill us in on all the Quad City poop. Need to check in with... Hey, touch base with Lane and see how we're doing with that clarifier. We finally dug ourselves out of that or... Yeah, so big weekend, so it's the golf outing and then Spilled a Dreams tomorrow night and then it's whole day of seminar and then it's fun and games, problem frolic on Thursday night hungover Friday. Tim will probably usually come to some of the stuff. Yeah. Oh, there's nothing better. Yeah, they always, I kind of, I'm not one, like they've got so much. Like when Bentley wants something, usually like, you know, churn it into like an ice cream cone or something 'cause it's like, I'm not a grandma that likes, you know, can't take care of the toys she's got at my house. Yeah, you know, she wants a Barbie, well how many Barbies do you got and how many do you really need? Well, Bentley can do the hair, of course she's got so much, but you know, she's, she's full-on good with doing even her Barbie's hair, so she's got, you know, I don't know, she's probably got at least fifteen Barbies, you know, at my house. And then she's got, then we have, you know, like Michael's girlfriend Mallory, you know, she's got like some stepkids that had, you know, like, you know, the big Barbie house that they outgrew, so then she brought it over for, you know, a lot of that stuff over for Bentley, so the big Barbie house. Then we have the Barbie cars and...
Was that you made the dollhouse? I did that for my nephew, I put together, he had his, we had an airport, you know, so it's like all these pieces, put it all together. I swear to God, the next morn-, you know, I was up like three hours at night. Swear to God, that next morning, he had it torn apart in thirty seconds. But I, speaking of dollhouses, that's, that was one of the things I made with my dad. We bought, at, at one of the craft shops, we bought a kit, not a kit, but a blueprint basically, and we made out of two four-by-eight sheets plywood. You, it's like four feet wide and two and a half feet tall and, and then you can, then you can buy all the, the windows have paint.
Thank you.
Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. All right. Go ahead.
Okay, we'll call the regular city council meeting to order with roll call, please.
Do Mire.
Here.
Heesling.
Here.
Linkhammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Reich.
Here. Okay, now we'll have citizens input. Do we have nobody on Zoom?
Sarah.
You want to talk?
No. Never talk.
Okay, I see nobody in the chambers. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Anything to be held separately or could I have a motion?
Could you pull out G and H, please?
Okay, could I have a motion for the consent agenda without G and H?
So moved.
Second.
Whatever.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Do Mire.
Aye.
Heesling.
Aye.
Linkhammer.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. You want me to go right to G then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have resolution number one hundred of twenty twenty-four, resolution approving the lease agreement with Luther Manor for equipment storage at twenty-four thirty-three Radford.
The reason I wanted to have this pulled out is I recall that meeting that we were going to rent the whole house out and I know that now it says replatted and then selling the property. I guess I called Beth and asked if we had some idea how long it was going to take to get it replatted and then when we were going to get it sold. And part of my reasoning is I don't want Luther Manor to rent the garage. And the reason for it is they rent when they when they pulled out of their old garage, they moved all of their equipment into a townhouse and that townhouse was that they were trying to sell. So it was they really messed up the garage and if it's if we're going to move this fairly quickly, then I don't really want any junk in the garage. Because it's attached garage and fifty bucks, if we go three months and not have anything in it, that's going to help the resale value as opposed to having it full of lawn mowers and all of their other equipment. And I saw what their two garages have looked like already with their stuff, so I'm just concerned about that.
Can I have a minute to clarify a couple of things? On May first, it was presented to city council that fifty-one thirty-three and twenty-four thirty-three Radford Road were going to be fifty-one thirty-three Asbury Road and twenty-four thirty-three Radford Road were going to be sold by the city, which is the parcel that we're looking to rent to Luther Manor, the twenty-four thirty-three Radford. So their plans have been all along and council was informed when we when I brought forward the demolition plan to them on May first. It is fifty dollars a rent, but they also mow. That's why it kind of made it a little bit more affordable to them. They mow fifty-one, the two properties on fifty-one fifty-one sixty-three Asbury Road. They mow fifty-one thirty-five Asbury Road, right, fifty-one thirty-three Asbury Road. And they mow they mow all that property. So as part of that fifty dollars, they will continue to mow and take care of and do snow removal on those properties. They are only having the garage portion of fifty twenty-four thirty-three Radford Road. They will not be getting keys to the inside. Their garage is separated by door from the house. They are not getting keys to the house, so they will not be able to get in and touch the house. I wanted to clarify those points before, you know, council continues the discussion. Thank you.
Beth, just then, the two questions I had is how fast will it be replatted and when is the anticipated sale date?
The plating, Nate, you can probably address that. We're probably looking sixty to ninety days for the plating.
We're still working on the preliminary design phase to make sure that we're going to have everything property-wise for whenever that time comes to do that project. That process is close to being wrapped up for the design portion and then we'll hand things off to our professional surveyor, John Dewey, to work on the replating process. So it's being worked on.
So there's still one other question that hasn't been answered and that is when is the projected date that's going to go up for sale?
After we have the plat, I didn't I don't feel it's in the best interest to put the house up for sale now. Because what the property is planted as now is not going to be, you know, forever and then we would have to buy it back. So the intent is to get this plating process done as soon as possible and the house would go on the market immediately after that. And how long it takes to sell, you know, probably not long in the current market.
I think Beth mentioned a sixty to ninety day timeline on that and I think that's very realistic.
I guess the other question though too is are we anticipating any issue with selling it because we're going to be putting a road construction right next to it for potentially within the next three to five years or whenever that's going to go? I don't know. I mean, I just I thought I thought we were going to rent the house out is what I thought.
Yes, that's what I thought.
We were going to get a property manager and rent the house out.
That is not what I communicated to the council on May first. Those houses were sold were down for sale of property and it was very clear that it was sale of property.
But that wasn't what we talked about when we bought it.
But we also discussed not being a landlord.
Right, we were going to get a property manager for all three of the properties that we currently own.
Really not even looking at doing that, not trying to hold it for that any length of time.
Then what's the plans on the two houses? The other two houses we're renting out, are we going to sell those?
The plan will be to have the lease again as I did. The rental property at fifty-one sixty-three will continue to be rented until construction. So that's the one that's closest to here on Asbury Road.
Right.
And the house that is next to it, fifty-one thirty-three Asbury Road, which we got affectionately called the hoarder house around here. Hopefully with this replating process that we can also sell that house as well. Again, this all was included in the memo on May first and no one seemed to have a problem with it at that time.
So is there any issue right now if we decide to maybe rent it out until we're ready? I mean, there's no sense in just renting the garage if we have an empty house.
I understand that, but if I'm following and if I'm not, please tell me that I don't get this right. But we're offsetting some of what we would get for rental on the whole house by the fact that our grass is being cut and we don't have to spend money.
I think what Karen is saying, should we rent fifty-one twenty-four thirty-three Radford Road instead of renting it out to Luther Manor for just the garage to rent to somebody on a longer term basis? And, you know, I was looking at it being more prudent and, you know, it would be somewhat a short term lease if we want to sell it in ninety days. And I didn't want to have a renter in there for a short period of time and then have then have to move out, you know, so we can sell it. To me, selling it gets our better return and our money back faster than just renting it for a longer term basis. And with renters, you never know what the condition of the property is going to be left in. Right now, that property is in very good condition.
Hence, the reason I don't want to rent the garage out because quoting you, you never know when renters are in it, what condition they're going to leave it in. That's.
What do you think about a security deposit?
Usually it's one month rents fifty bucks.
If you're afraid of them trashing the garage, correct?
And and them having it it being occupied when we're trying to sell it. Because they're going to want to keep the garage until we sell it and it will present better if you don't have all that stuff in the garage.
We can give them thirty days notice at any point in time. So if we think we're going to be putting the property up for sale, we can give them thirty days notice and get them out, you know, while we're doing the plating process.
And one last question on the replating. Was there also a discussion about subdividing and making that property into two lots? Because it's got a three fourths of an acre, which means there's another possibility of another lot for sale if we want on the back end of that property, right?
We did touch on that, but we never made any definite decision.
And that's why that's why I just wanted to discuss it. That's why I wanted to throw this one back in.
And one consideration you need to make if you're thinking about subdividing a lot off is that subdivided lot would not have water and sewer. So we would have to come up with a plan to service that property with water and sewer.
Well, it would have it probably when you put the road in, right? I would assume there's going to be a water line along that road and sewer line.
That's the plan, yes.
I guess it depends on the owner too, whoever is looking to buying it, what their goal is, what they're looking to put on that property.
Well, it depends on how we put it up for sale.
Which depends on how it's replatted.
That's where I'm getting at.
So is there a recommendation or a resolution approval?
I'll make a I'll make a motion to approve resolution one hundred of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing that roll call, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Do Mire.
Nay.
Heesling.
Aye.
Linkhammer.
Nay.
Pass is three to two. Now we have resolution number one oh one of twenty twenty-four, resolution approving a professional service agreement between MSA Professional Services and the City of Asbury for the Meadows Kart Pass twenty twenty-four project, construction related services.
To call it for a vote, I just need to be able to vote against that.
What do you want to discuss?
I don't want to discuss it. I just need to call it for a vote because it needs to be I need to be able to vote no on this specific item. That's the only way I can do it.
Anybody else want to discuss? And could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept resolution one oh one twenty twenty-four, resolution approving a professional service agreement between MSA Professional Services and the City of Asbury for the Meadows Kart Pass twenty twenty-four project.
Second.
Have motion is second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to see this done. It's like building. If we don't make the cart pass look nice, why did we do all the other updates?
Well, I will make a comment that if we didn't have cart pass in, we'd have been closed for two weeks. We'd lost food, beverage, all the revenue that had been coming in, which has been substantial. We didn't have it with the whole the topography there. You just have to have it part of doing business. Anyhow, anything else? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Do Mire.
That's not the order that you called the roll in.
Miller.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Do Mire.
Nay.
Heesling.
Aye.
Linkhammer.
Aye.
Pass is four to one. Moving on to resolution number one oh three of twenty twenty-four, resolution approving change order number two for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project, Nate?
Yeah, just a brief update on the project. They've been working on some storm sewer items lately and actually tomorrow there will be a brief shutdown for the water system and they're going to tie in and start laying water main here for the foreseeable future. So they've been hard at work, having some pretty good days lately. As long as the weather can take a nice turn for us here, things are looking good. With that being said, change order number two is actually accounting for a water main relocation that was necessary as part of the storm sewer installation back at the end of May. We would have caught it on the last pay request, but it just was kind of that cutoff timeline wise to get it in with that pay app. So it's here tonight. The amount for that change order is sitting at six thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Unless council has any questions, MSA would recommend approval of change order number two.
I think they're doing a great job. It looks really good off the sunset behind our house, but with the weather, you can't do much when it rains every day.
Yeah, it's been a tough season, definitely.
Or expect to rain. That's just it.
Nate, did I hear you write that they're going to have to shut off water?
Tomorrow, it's just for a connection to tie the new water main in and then they'll they'll turn the new one off and the old one back on basically once they have that done. So it'd be for a few hours tomorrow morning.
We've notified residents.
Yeah, yeah, actually thinks, yeah.
You turn the old, you said turn the old one off. Have they tested the new line yet or is this just?
They're going to start putting the new one in.
So the old line will still So the old line will still be in service until the new one's in and tested?
Yeah, we just kind of cut and connect and cap and do it all to make things work, so it's just part of the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to accept resolution one oh three of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Now we have resolution number one oh four of twenty twenty-four, resolution approving pay app number five for the Autumn Drive Reconstruction Project, Nate?
Yeah, this pay request just accounts for quite a few different items, mainly the finished, uh, sanitary sewer work that they completed a few weeks back, along with some of the newer storm sewer work that they completed, uh, some of the restoration items for the backyard areas where the, the sanitary sewer started. Um, they've got some of that, the grass seems to be doing much better now, um, back there, and, uh, just a few erosion control items. Uh, the amount for this pay request comes to one hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Unless there are any questions from council, MSA recommends approval of pay request number five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one oh four of twenty twenty-four, approving pay app number five for the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Next, we have resolution number one oh five of twenty twenty-four, resolution approving pay application number four for the Forest Hills Wetland Improvements Project.
Yeah, so this project, for all intents and purposes, is what I would call substantially complete now. Um, the main majority of the work is done. Uh, the, the payment for tonight is for site grading and some restoration, however, we're going to leave this project open for the time being. Uh, there's, for the most part, the site looks really good with the new growth coming in, I was just out there the other day, um, but there are some areas that are probably going to need some touch-up grading and seeding, um, come fall here, uh, and, and we'll get on that when the time comes. But other than that, this pay request comes to seventeen thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Uh, unless you have any questions, we would recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one oh five dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Now we have resolution number one oh six of twenty twenty-four, resolution to set the date for public hearing for the twenty twenty-four sludge removal project. Two weeks?
Yeah, this just kicks off the bidding process.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one oh six of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Motion as second, any further discussion?
Um, just for clarification, the plans and specs are, um, is part of the public content for the meeting tonight, so if anybody has any questions on them, make sure to, um, address those with Nate. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Heesling?
Aye.
Linkhammer?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. This time we'll take further public comment for any new items not previously presented. I see you have Kathy on.
Kathy, do you have anything you want to add?
Not tonight, thank you, though.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody in the chamber, so we'll move on to reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
Second.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass is five zero. Um, I guess we'll start with roundtable.
Um, Bob, can you let, um, Blaine address the council for a second? We have an immediate, emergency kind of situation we need council to be aware of and kind of give affirmation and.
Blaine, would you please?
I can't wait till the next meeting, but, um, we need to get things rolling.
Uh, June twenty-fourth, Colonial Estates well pump motor failed. We think it was caused by lightning is what it looks like. We've had that well and pump pulled, uh, by Northway Well and Pump. They have given us a quote for our insurance claim to cover the, uh, cost of pulling the pump and, uh, replacing the motors, forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, which should be, looks like it'll probably be covered under insurance. Uh, and then we have a, our motor is also fifteen, or pump is also fifteen years old, so that's in need of replacement, along with all of the well pipe, uh, discharge piping from the pump, so, um, that total comes, is going to come in between thirty-six thousand and forty thousand, which is what we'll be on the hook for, for that. We have that money set aside in reserves for Colonial Estates well, um, but with ordering and time of year, this is one of our major production wells, we need to get this ball rolling, so I'm just kind of looking for a head nod, and it'll be on the next council meeting for final approval, but I'd like to get this, get this moving, so just want to give you a heads up on that.
Yeah.
I think you had, you got to, you got to repair this.
I think everybody's nodding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we, is it, you said it's one of our main pumps, so we have any potential issues in the city, if that, until it gets replaced, or are they, they having issues? Okay. 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 Yeah. Is it, is it something where we need to, and I hate, I hate to say it, but do we need to shut the water off of this splash pad to compensate for that? Okay, I just, I just, I'm just, just thinking outside the box. Okay. Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, thanks. All right, then we'll have, uh, roundtable. Kurt?
Uh, yeah. I'm going to start off my, my comments here with an apology, because I'm not a hundred percent up to date on this particular thing that I was approached on as soon as I got into town, and I haven't been over to the Forest Hills area to take a look, but apparently there's a lot of mud issues on, on the pass. Is, is this? Okay. Okay. So you're aware of it, and it's being, it's being dealt with? Okay, that, that, again, I wasn't going to, I didn't know whether I should ask you or, or what, so I apologize to everybody else. Okay. Right. Yes. Okay, like I say, I, I just got back into town and I got inundated with this, and I haven't had a chance to get over there myself, so got it. Thank you so much. That's all I have. Kurt, nothing this evening. Karen?
Tom, I had, uh, acquaintance call me, a citizen up in the Spring Green Apartments that was involved in a hit-and-run, and that was last week, and she had nothing but compliments to say about the police officer that was there, and she just wanted to say thank to have, I don't know who it was, but if you could tell that person, or if it was you, thank you, we appreciate it.
I don't have anything. Beth, you want to go into correspondence?
Um, there really isn't that much there, but, uh, music in the park is Saturday, so make sure you come up and enjoy the bounce houses and the music and bring your kids.
We might want to set up a couple sprinklers, it's supposed to be a hundred degrees plus with the wind.
We'll do one of those rainfall things.
Yeah, rainfall.
I don't, anybody have anything else? Otherwise, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned. I would have seconded that.
Yeah, I know, I know, you were, you were looking, as soon as he said he made the motion, it's like, okay, he's, we can't, we, we can't hold Bob, we can't hold Baba.